All right. All right, everybody.
Check, check.
All right, everybody. There we go. Fix the technical difficulties. It is 7:01 PM and I'd like to call this meeting to order while this meeting is being held in person in consideration of ongoing COVID-19 health concerns. We are also offering the public the possibility to participate through Zoom if preferred. Instructions on how to participate virtually are included in the city council calendar item listed on the front page of Mission KS.org. Please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, original stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Robin, can you please call the roll?
Thomas?
Here.
Here.
Riard?
Here.
Pink?
Here.
Amen.
Here.
Here.
All right, we do have a revised agenda for tonight's meeting. I would entertain a motion to approve our revised agenda.
Mayor, I move that the city council approve the revised agenda for September 21, 2022 as printed.
Second. Motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Thomas?
Yes.
Mouse?
Aye.
Bowden? Riard?
Aye.
Pink?
Aye.
In? Chelsea?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Question carries.
All right, we do not have any public hearings tonight. So we will move on to our special presentations. Our first special presentation is the Suicide Awareness Month proclamation. Our first proclamation recognizes September as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. Many organizations and individuals throughout our community work to collaborate and raise awareness of suicide prevention resources which are available to all. I would particularly like to recognize and thank our educators, mental health professionals, police officers, and mental health coresponder for all their work on this crucial matter. I would also like to state for the record the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline that is staffed 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to assist those in need as well as provide support to their loved ones. Earlier this year, the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline transitioned to 988. You can now call 988 on any telephone and connect with a local call center with trained mental health professionals who are available 24/7 to provide support, listen, and provide guidance on next steps to keep yourself and others safe. Johnson County's Mental Health Center's 24/7 crisis line is also available in our community. Help is available day or night by calling 913-268-0156. The original National Suicide Prevention Lifeline number, 1-800-273-TALK, or 1-800-273-8255, will also remain available for those in emotional distress or suicidal crisis. We hope for continued progress for those tirelessly working in this effort and for the well-being and care of those experiencing distress. Our next presentation this evening is Recognizing Diaper Needs Awareness Week for 2022. For the past few years, Mission has observed this week by issuing a proclamation to raise awareness of the widespread need for diapers to improve the health and welfare of infants and toddlers. In the Kansas City area, 22,000 children need diaper assistance. Diapers cannot be bought with food stamps or WIC vouchers, and a monthly supply can cost, on average, $100 or as much as 6% of a full-time minimum wage worker's salary. Families living in the urban core without access to big-box or warehouse stores must also pay a premium at their corner store or local market. We encourage the community to support this important effort and provide relief to those in need by donating to the Happy Bottoms Diaper Bank in Kansas City. Diapers and wipes will also be collected at City Hall and the Community Center through the end of the month and donated to Happy Bottoms. We do not have any items related to the issuance of notes and bonds this evening, so we will next move into our consent agenda. Our consent agenda has six items tonight. Our council committees met on September 7th and fully discussed each of these items. The committees agreed the items listed on our consent agenda are routine enough to be considered under a single motion. If a council member or member of the public would like an item removed from the consent agenda, they may request that at this time. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Mayor, I move that the city council adopt consent agenda as printed items 4A through 4F.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Yes.
Aye.
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 All right, next we move into public comments. If any members of the public would like to make a comment on items that are not on our agenda this evening, now would be the time. If you are participating through Zoom, please either add your comment in the chat feature and it will be read out loud, or note that you would like to speak, and we will call on you shortly to make your comment verbally. Please remember your comments or questions are visible to everyone in the meeting. If you are part of our in-person group tonight, please raise your hand but stay seated, and we will call on you to come to the lectern to make your comments. When you make your comment, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Also be conscientious of others trying to speak and speak slowly and clearly. If I need to confirm something that may have been difficult to hear, I will ask for clarification. Don't see any hands in the audience and looks like no one online, so we will move into our action items from our planning commission. We have three items coming forward from the planning commission tonight. The first is consideration of a preliminary development plan for the 5665 Foxridge Drive project and approval of the preliminary plat of 5665 Foxridge Drive. Mr. Scott, will you please provide your report? Oh, actually, Carrie.
Thank you, Mary. You want me to do the PDP and the plat?
For? Um, yeah, if you wanted to do the presentation for both, that would be fine. Yeah.
Okay. I'll be presenting case 2211, the 5655 Foxridge, 5665 Foxridge Preliminary Development Plan, and case 2215, 5665 Foxridge Plat. The subject property is located at the southeast corner of 56 and 56th Street and Foxridge Drive. It's the former site of the JCPenney Call Center, built in 1970, and the existing structure has been vacant for over a decade. The property is zoned M1 and lies within the Form-Based Code District. It also falls within the jurisdiction of the Johnson Drive Design Guidelines. Surrounding properties are zoned R1, CO, and CPO, CP2B, and MP. Adjacent land uses are low-rise office and parking for nearby and a nearby high-rise office building. The existing structure will be demolished prior to the redevelopment of this proposal, and the applicant proposes a four-to-five-story multifamily structure over one-story podium parking garage with 446 parking spaces. Twenty-two visitor surfing surface parking spaces are located on the west in front of the clubhouse entry. Central courtyard provides amenities, including a pool, pickleball court, and other recreational features. Units consist of one, two, and three-bedroom rentals. The majority of the sites slope slightly downward from east to west, and the six-story structure along Foxridge is reduced to five stories on Broadmoor, from a height of approximately 80 feet to a height of 67. The topography of the site provides ideal locations for loading areas and garage entry on the east side of the building incorporated into the parking structure, and trash facilities on the north are enclosed within the garage area. A second garage entry is on the north side at 56th Street. Building materials and facade treatments, along with exterior landscaping, serve to engage street frontages and the pedestrian realm on all sides. The facades of the building are treated similarly on all four sides with neutral earth tones, brick, stucco, and stone materials per the Johnson Drive Design Guidelines. Stairs from the street level lead to an elevated walkway on the north and south sides of the building, and the south facade walkway wraps around partially on the west. The proposal includes a pedestrian crosswalk on Broadmoor that connects to nearby Broadmoor Park, and an extension of a 10-foot-wide bicycle and pedestrian trail in the right-of-way along Foxridge Drive connects with existing pedestrian sidewalks as well as the shared bike path on Foxridge Drive. Staff encouraged the applicant to include these connections in accordance with the future trail and bicycle pedestrian development plans along the Metcalf Corridor and sidewalks around the entire development encouraged pedestrian activity at the ground level. Staff also worked with the applicant to articulate the building entrances to include Broadmoor Street as a dual-entry point, with the main entry being on Foxridge Drive. While the primary frontage is on Foxridge Drive, other prominent entrances are on Broadmoor Street to encourage walkability to commercial businesses on the Johnson Drive Corridor and to nearby Broadmoor Park. Staff worked with the applicant to provide transparent glazing that faces Broadmoor and mimics the entry on Foxridge Drive to enhance the side of the building that faces Mission, and proposed park benches, bike racks, and bike racks encourage walkability and bikeability. Key takeaways from the comprehensive plan include trail connection along the street, along with street scape improvements along the Metcalf Corridor, and an emphasis on creating a safe and welcoming trail or sidewalk to connect Mission's parks. The comprehensive plan also encourages taking advantage of the Metcalf frontage to help provide a stronger base for retail on Johnson Drive. Staff believes that this development could be a catalyst for future development along the Metcalf Corridor. Additional trail connections, as well as stimulus for continued commercial development in Mission's West Gateway and downtown core. Staff has worked with the applicant to include various elements to conform with the Form-Based Code. And I'll try to make this Form-Based Code part short. According to the Form-Based Code, the project proposal must score a total of 90 out of 100 points to move through the review process and achieve approval at the preliminary development stage, preliminary development plan stage. Proposals that score less than 90 points do continue through the normal approval process, including a required approval by both the planning, recommended approval by the planning commission, and approval by the city council. Step one of the regulating plan controls three elements with a total required 45-point score. And step one is of primary importance when we're evaluating Form-Based Code plans before they move on to the next stage. A total of 45 out of 45 is required. The three elements are block configuration and frontage. That's step one, or element one. Element two is parking, and element three is access. According to the Form-Based Code, Broadmoor should be the primary frontage of the development, which requires ground-floor retail. Parking should be in the rear and screened, and the proposed development fronts Foxridge Drive and Metcalf, not Broadmoor. The development does not propose ground-floor office or retail. However, an attempt has been made through revisions of the initial concept and design to reconfigure the Broadmoor frontage to allow for secondary entrances and some transparency to the maker space, bike storage, and dog spa. While a development that primarily faces the Mission community rather than Overland Park is ideal, staff believes that the articulation of secondary transparent entrances on the east facade somewhat counterbalances the undesirable location of the garage entry along Broadmoor. Also, by providing narrowed garage doors and consistent color to blend with the building facade, the garage entry does not appear to be prominent or the focal point of the facade. Surface parking on the west is screened from vehicular and pedestrian view by landscaping. Staff awarded the proposal a total of 15 out of the required 45 points in step one. So naturally, it goes through planning commission, recommendation to city council, and now to you. Staff went forward with the rest of the scoring just to try to show the other elements of the Form-Based Code that the that the plan meets. And staff scored the proposal for steps one through four, a total of 39 out of 100 points. The applicant worked with staff to incorporate additional details to address the intent of the Form-Based Code, and staff agrees that the additional measures to incorporate transparency and address the pedestrian realm along Broadmoor, along with many of the design elements, do create an environment that largely meets the intent of the Form-Based Code. Landscape guidelines are not scored in the review process, but they are a part of the overall consideration. And the proposed elements such as street trees, planters, park benches, pedestrian-scale streetlights, trash and recycling receptacles, and bike racks enhance the overall quality of the pedestrian environment. The plan generally meets or exceeds requirements of both the Johnson Drive Design Guidelines and the municipal code. The sustainability scorecard that was submitted with the development application states that the that this project plans to pursue LEED certification. The applicant did meet with the Sustainability Commission in early July to discuss the sustainable measures the developers are evaluating for the project, and the commission scored the project 82 points out of 100 for a gold rating. Landscape will be native and hardy to northeast Kansas region. Final considerations for recommended stormwater management will be considered during the final development plan. And KDOT has jurisdiction over drainage areas to the west and north of the property, so we'll have to wait on their considerations for those. The traffic impact study proposed five safety improvements. To, one, to lengthen the southbound left turn lane. One, to lengthen the northbound right turn lane to construct a 565-foot acceleration lane to reconfigure the east leg of the intersection at, I believe it's Metcalf and 56, including to the raised channeling island to, I'm sorry, the raised channelizing island to better accommodate turning movements and to install yield line pavement markers for the southbound left turn. Delays and queues are expected to increase slightly, but they're still at an acceptable level of service or LOS. And staff was concerned about the intersection at 56 and Metcalf being in close proximity to the intersection at 56 and Foxridge. But because that's part of KDOT's jurisdiction, the traffic signal is not evaluated with this project. Long-term improvements for Metcalf Corridor should also be evaluated at another time. Safety, risk, and accident mitigation measures should also be evaluated and considered with final development plan for this project, and recommended conditions of approval are A through I as part of your staff report. I can address any of those questions or whatever else you have, and then we also have the applicant here who can answer your questions as well.
Yeah, so first, do we have any member of the public here tonight or online who would like to comment or ask questions on this issue? Seeing none, we'll open up the floor for council discussion. Any questions for Carrie or would we like to hear from the developer on any items? Yeah, Trent?
You have a question for the applicant?
Okay. Any questions for Carrie before we turn to the applicant? Come on up.
We do have a presentation. I was waiting to make sure that no one in the public wanted to make a comment before we started, so if that's all right with you, mayor, and
Yeah.
members of the council, we'll go ahead. I'm Aaron Messmer. I'm with Block Real Estate Services. We are a local developer based in Kansas City that that's not working. Can we go full screen with it or presentation view?
And you have to speak right into the mic or it won't get you.
Might do that. That way I'm not doing this the whole time. So Block Real Estate Services is a local developer. We do office, industrial, medical, and multifamily properties as well as retail. We've been based in Kansas City since 1945, so a long history here in the community and a number of projects throughout town. We do have a development team with us today. I didn't get everybody on the slide because we've got a lot of folks, but we've got Braden and Brian from MKEC. They are our civil engineers. Rich Kness will be talking here in just a few minutes. He's our architect with NSPJ. Curtis Holland at Paulsonelli is our attorney. And Jeff Wilkie is sitting here with us as well. He's from Kimley Horn. They are our traffic study consultant. And so, like I said, Block has a big presence here. Hopefully you've heard of us. If not, maybe you will from time to time. And one of the things that I did want to emphasize as being a local market owner and operator, these are all projects that we've done in town, but we actually have never sold a multifamily property that we developed. So we have bought and sold properties that other people have built, but of the ones that we build, we're long-term owners. What that means is you build to a different level of quality. You build to a different standard, and reputationally, we know we're going to have to operate these in the future, and then it reflects on our whole brand, and I think that that just informs the quality and the design and how you run the properties going forward. As Carrie talked about, this is the site context. Most of you are familiar with where the property is, but we're primarily surrounded by office and then Metcalf and the parking lot for Broadmoor Park there. One of the things I thought was important to highlight was the existing conditions. So if you can see the property today, what you'll see is there's no sidewalks there. There's no connectivity. And even though we are basically at the southern end of the trail as it crosses 56th Street there, that doesn't go further into the property or make the connection over Broadmoor Park at this time. And that's an important part of the the project to us. And what you can see, as Carrie said, is an abandoned call center that's been there for some time. We did go ahead and buy the property earlier this year, so we do own the real estate at this point and are excited to see what this will become in a go-forward. The other thing that I think is important to note, and Carrie mentioned it, but the site has a pretty big slope from the southwest to the northeast side of the property. And what that does is, if you can imagine the side of a hill, what we've done is actually buried our parking in the side of that hill, and that's why the entrances to the garage are where they are. That's kind of why the property is configured the way that it is, because the site conditions really make that the most ideal configuration there. I'm going to turn it over to Rich and let him go through the overall site plan and just talk through some of the design elements here, and then I'll come back and finish up.
Okay, can you hear me okay? Great. Rich Kness with NSPJ Architects live in Overland Park, Kansas. So when we first started looking at this project, we wanted to expand the boundaries and look at it. You saw that site context, Matt, and we thought maybe there's some opportunities to create some additional connectivity to the park, to the trail system, and those things are incorporated into this design. First, by extending the trail system on the west down across our site. Additionally, we created a walkway connection along the south edge to connect the trail system to the park system to really kind of enhance the overall area. As Carrie mentioned, there are garage entries on the north and the east tucked under, and we have our visitor parking on the west or left side there for 22 visitor parking spaces that lead to a landscaped entry courtyard that leads into the clubhouse. Another important aspect of this is that on the north and the south, we have created 16 walkout units intentionally so that we can further activate the street on both sides and really enhance the the public realm. And as Carrie mentioned, we spent a lot of time along Broadway working together to see what we can do together to really create a rich pedestrian experience, and we've done that a number of ways, starting with benches and bike racks and pet stations and and those kind of components, but also in the building where we have lined the edges with our amenity spaces to increase that transparency and those types of things. This is a view of that entry courtyard I talked about on the west-hand side. You can see how lush it will be and leading into the entry to the clubhouse itself. Going to the corner of 56 and Broadmoor, a couple of things stand out I just want to point out to you. First is the quality materials that we're using. It's brick, it's stone, it's stucco, all high-quality materials. We also spent a great deal of time working on the undulation of the facade and the parapets to create a rich visual experience as you look on all sides of this. One more thing there. I neglected to mention that we talked about these amenity spaces that we were lining the edge of Broadmoor, and you can start to see those on the on the corner there and that transparency, and those will be spaces like our makery space, our cycory, dog spa, and components like that that will help further activate. This is just another view. You're south looking north, and you can start to see the entry locations, the glazing at the makery space in the middle, just continuing that language all the way around. And it's intentional. As we said, we want to activate that street. We want it to be really the primary connection point of the residents to Johnson Drive and to the community as a whole. This is just another view looking north along Broadmoor. You can see the bike racks on the side, the extensive landscaping on all sides of the project, and the garage entry tucked in there as well. Another another thing I wanted to point out here is that we've created a dog spa right on this side as well, so that if the resident walks their dog over at the park, they can go right in through an exterior door into the dog spa, wash their dog's feet, or the entire dog, depending on how extensive the walk was, and then head on up to their unit. Those are the kinds of things that really help make this an active thing. This is the south side of the project, and what we have here is true four-sided architecture. Every side was dealt with equally, all the same high-quality materials all the way around. You can also start to see the walkout units right there. In the foreground is the connecting walk that links the park to the trail system, and we also have a dog run on the far left there for the residents as well. Diving into the plan just a little bit further, as mentioned, there are 446 parking spaces tucked into the hillside, as we mentioned, so we're hiding those stalls away. We've also tucked trash and loading also within the envelope of the garage. The colored boxes you see on the right are those amenity spaces that I was talking about, a makery space, a cycory, dog spa, those those kind of components. We have a total of 307 units in the project. I neglected to mention that we also have car charging stations as one of our sustainable components. I'll dive into that a little bit later, but just wanted to reference that as well. We have a mix of executive, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom units to get a wide range of ages and tenants, residents in this project. The top floor is a partial floor, and it steps down towards the neighborhood to keep the scale more appropriate at that level. As you look in the center, we have the large amenity courtyard. It has the things that you might expect like a pool, but it also has a running track, putting green, bocce ball, pickleball, and all the other barbecue components and things of that nature. I think we've done a really good job really working to try to activate every side of the streets, as I mentioned, along Broadmoor, along that south edge. And I think we've really worked towards activating the street level, making sure we're enhancing the public realm as a benefit to the community, increased walkability for everyone, not just the residents throughout. As I mentioned, sustainability is an important part of this project, and we started embedding that into the project at the very beginning. And it starts with the site. This was a previously undeveloped site, as Aaron mentioned, but we've developed a dense, compact development. It's got great proximity to bus routes and shops and other components which all lend itself to that sustainable component. We've enhanced the walks and bypass as part of that effort as well. We've got long-term, short-term bike storage. We're also looking at things like a high-reflectance roof to reduce energy costs and careful selection of light fixtures to minimize and reduce any light pollution as well. One of the things we also did was brought on the contractor and consultants. Early on in the project, we wanted them to be invested in the sustainability effort across the project, and so we started working towards developing construction waste management plans, identifying environmentally friendly products as well. And that's just part of it. Energy is always a really big important factor when you look at sustainability, a true sustainable project. So we're working on energy modeling, but also metering the energy usage so that we can make informed decisions and make sure things are running correctly and share that data with others. We're talking about energy star appliances, but all the systems will be no CFC-based refrigerant. Uh, we're talking about energy, uh, star appliances, but all the systems will be, uh, uh, no CFC-based refrigerants. The same is true for water. Uh, we're going to meter that water so we know where the usage is coming from and how we can manage it. Uh, low-flow, uh, plumbing fixtures are a matter of course, uh, throughout the facility. And we're going to look at ways, uh, to, uh, reduce irrigation by data plants a- and those components. But most importantly, we need the, uh, residents to feel comfortable, uh, from an acoustical perspective, uh, a- and also, uh, air quality perspective. So we're looking at, uh, enhanced filtration systems, uh, not permitting, uh, tobacco smoking, uh, on, on the, uh, site, uh, radar-resistant construction, uh, as well as a selection of low VOC materials, so we don't get that smell, uh, that comes through. And all that's great, but it really needs to, uh, make sure that the building runs as intended. And so we've invested time and effort, uh, and will, uh, talking about, uh, mechanical commissioning to make sure the systems run correctly, uh, training the staff who needs to operate it in the function, uh, as it's designed, uh, inspecting the project throughout construction so that, uh, we make sure it's being built the way it was designed to, uh, reap the benefits of all the things we're focused on. So in summary, I think we've, uh, invested in sustainability at every level, at the macro level and the, the micro level, uh, and created a really great facility, uh, that we're all very proud to put in front of you today.
Thank you, Rich. Um, I'll be brief. So just to wrap up the rest of our, uh, presentation, this is our last slide. It references traffic, which I know Carrie touched on. Um, I think there's a couple of key components there. The first is that the traffic study was done by us, but submitted to KDOT, um, and the city. Um, and KDOT's review, uh, ultimately concluded that our development would have a lesser impact, uh, than the current call center use. And a lot of the reason for that is when you have a call center and office space, people are coming there at one time during the day. Um, whereas in multifamily, you have traffic that's coming and going throughout the day. So, um, we're really adding about two trips per minute during the peak hours, um, not a huge impact. Uh, but we are aware of the issues that already exist today on fifty-sixth and Metcalf, um, and certainly, uh, that's something that'll have to be worked through in the future. So happy to take any questions you have and, and certainly happy to talk more about the project.
Yep, I think I saw Trent's hand up and then Hillary and then Debbie.
Thank you. I noticed that in the packet we had reviewing this, you had, or the group had expressed a desire to pursue lead certification to our sustainability.
Correct.
But I didn't see that listed in your presentation.
Yeah, so we've got the sustainable components and the components that Rich mentioned tonight are components that we will do regardless of whether we do, uh, lead certification or not. So those are, those are kind of the baseline. Um, and Laura asked me to delineate those from what we would do, um, under a lead, uh, pursuit. In order for us to probably do a lead pursuit, we're probably going to come back and ask for incentives at some future time. So that's, uh, a pretty big burden, um, in terms of dollars and cents, it's in the millions, it's not in the thousands. Uh, in terms of, of making that effort, about half a million dollars alone is to document and, um, take into account the, the engineering and the oversight for the lead component. So there's a, there's a big lift there. Um, we're not here today to ask for incentives, we're simply asking for plan approvals. Um, and to the extent that we get into an incentive discussion, uh, with you and, and your group at a future time, I think that's when we'll define exactly what components of the lead certification, uh, we'll pursue. Uh, but it's been very clear, um, from Laura, from Brian, from Carrie, um, and everybody else we've talked to, that, uh, that's the, that's a critical component for any incentive agreement that we would enter into.
Something, thank you.
Yeah, Hillary.
Trent asked my question. Thank you.
All right, over to Debbie.
What, uh, three hundred and seven units? So you can say maybe five hundred people. What kind of security do you have here?
Yeah, I think that's a great question. Um, so three hundred and seven units, depending on the mix, you're, you're going to be about one point four-ish, so you're, you're kind of right on top of the number. And what we do in our communities, uh, first of all, we have onsite staff at every community. So during the daytime, um, for a three hundred unit community, the rule of thumb is typically going to be one per hundred unit plus one in the office and one per hundred unit plus one out of the office. So out of the office, think maintenance, landscaping, housekeeping and so forth. So we'll probably have four people that work throughout the community every day, um, during the weekday. Um, and then in the office, you'll have four people. You usually will have three there and then the, the, the fourth one is going to be your redundancy. So weekends, staffing and things of that nature. So there's going to be eight people that work for us here probably at, at all times during the day. All of our properties are card accessed, so, um, we use, uh, Breevo system, um, like, everybody has their own, but every resident, um, not only has the ability to have a fob, but what we're doing now with smart technology, um, and this is, this is all part of the new deal, but you can actually do it on your phone. So Ken Block has a deal on his phone. He can go to any door of any of our properties, not your residence, but the public spaces, and, and be able to walk around and do that sort of thing. And our residents have the same capability. It allows you to see who's accessing the property, um, at what times. You can see if your maintenance guy goes into a unit for fifteen minutes or if he's in there for fifty minutes. Um, so that's a, that's an important component to security and safety. And then, um, all of our communities have lots of cameras. So our project at forty-four Washington, which that, this is this picture, I think we've got seventy cameras in there. Um, part of that is for security. Part of it is when you drag your couch down the hall and you put a big gash in my wall, I want to know who to charge back. Um, when you let your dog pee in the elevator and you don't clean it up, we're going to fine you for that. Um, so there's a, there's a big component, not just to security, but operationally, uh, with the cameras. Um, and then there are certain properties that we do have, um, security after hours. Uh, we typically don't see that in a place like this, um, but it does exist in a couple of our properties.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Yeah, Hillary? Come up with a new one?
A new one. Unlimited. Um, yeah, I was just wondering what your estimated timeline is. I know it's early right now, but if things go according to how you'd like them to go.
Sure. Um, so we're at preliminary plan and zoning approval level at this point. The next steps for us would be final plan approvals, and then you take those final plan approvals and turn those into a set of permit drawings. To get from where we are, if we put our pencils on paper and started going right away, it's about a six-month process just to do that. Um, and then what you need is for really kind of three major components to align. One is the market rates have to allow you to build the project, meaning the rents have to be strong enough to support it. Um, the second is, um, interest rates have to be favorable enough where your interest costs aren't getting killed. And the third is construction costs. Um, what we've seen over the last couple of years is construction costs have risen by eleven to fifteen percent a year for three or four years in a row. Um, that's unsustainable. I, I don't think that that's going to continue going forward. And we, we actually bid a project in September that we bid in May. And they weren't down much, but it was down by like maybe one percent. And if you're the guy that's putting the carpet in, y- the day that I go to build the project, you're not even going to be on site for eighteen months or twenty months. So if that guy's paying a hundred dollars for that piece of carpet, he's putting a hundred and thirty in his bid today. If those costs start coming in at four percent increases or three percent or five percent increases, or they stay flat, and our forecasts say that they may even go down in the first quarter of next year, a little bit, not much. Um, he doesn't have to put as much fluff in that number. So his bid might be a hundred and ten instead of a hundred and thirty, even though today's cost is a hundred dollars. And so we're, we're optimistic that, um, those things will eventually align, uh, but it's going to be market-driven. And, you know, three hundred basis points of interest rate increase in the last six months, nine months, whatever it's been this year, is hard to take. Um, if you think about three percent times sixty million dollar construction loan, that's a million eight per year, and it takes two years to build one of these things. So you're talking about three and a half million dollars of additional expense, um, to get over the finish line. So we're going to continue to monitor that. And at the, at the time that the market's right, um, you know, we're committed to build the project. Uh, Ken already owns the real estate, like I said, so he bought the ground. This isn't subject to that working for us to go ahead and close on it by the site. Uh, but I think it's going to take all of those elements sort of coming into focus at one time, uh, for us to be able to move forward.
Right. Any further questions? Yeah, Debbie?
One more quickly. Are, are you adding new utility lines? If so, are they all overhead or any of them buried? Where are we on the utility side?
Great question for not me. You guys want to take that one?
Good evening. Uh, Brian Hill with MKEC Engineering, uh, civil engineer, uh, for the project. Uh, we are in the process of evaluating utilities for the project, including, uh, overhead power, um, there on, uh, the north and the south sides of, of the, of the site. And, uh, that'll be evaluated as the, uh, project continues. Uh, right now, the, um, the project, uh, we've coordinating with Evergy and, um, the, the building is uh, separated there enough, uh, to provide, uh, really good clearances there from the current overhead lines, but, uh, that's still in, uh, i- in process, uh, with utilities.
Thank you. All right, not seeing any more hands, so thank you so much for the presentation. I don't know, Carrie, if you want to come back up? I, I would go ahead and entertain a motion on the preliminary development plan component.
Mayor, I move the city council adopt an ordinance approving the preliminary development plan for fifty-six sixty-five Fox Ridge Drive, filed by BK Properties LLC, PC case twenty-two eleven.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the preliminary development plan? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Davis.
Hi.
Josie.
Hi.
Inman. Krang.
Hi.
Ryard.
Hi.
Loudon. Boltinghouse.
Hi.
Thomas.
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, thank you. Um, Carrie, you want to go forward on the plat?
Sure. Um, again, I'll state this is, uh, case twenty-two fifteen, uh, fifty-six sixty-five Fox Ridge plat. Um, the current, uh, the property is not currently platted, so with the preliminary development plan, staff requested that they would also, um, submit a preliminary plat. And in this case, there is no right-of-way dedication, so this will be just the preliminary plat. Basically, code review and analysis at section four forty-two twenty states that preliminary plats shall be approved by the planning commission, which it was already approved by the planning commission. Now it's on your table if it meets the requirements of that section of the code and staff concludes that it does. Uh, generally under, uh, section four fifty-five one hundred of the Mission Municipal Code, a typical subdivision, the time of original plat shall exercise good designated layout. The good planning principles are followed, efficient use of land and natural assets such as trees and topography be retained wherever practical. The above dimensions and designations are in accordance with stip- stipulations set forth, and that's all I have on that one.
All right, any questions on this piece?
Yep. I just had a quick question going back. Do we have a name for this complex?
Okay. Name TBD.
I want to stop having to say fifty-six sixty-five Fox.
Right, anything further? If not, I would entertain a motion for the preliminary plat.
Mayor, I move the city council approve the resolution adopting the preliminary plat of fifty-six sixty-five Fox Ridge Drive, PC case twenty-two dash fifteen.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Inman. Davis.
Hi.
Ryard.
Hi.
Boltinghouse.
Hi.
Thomas.
Yes.
Loudon. Krang.
Hi.
Josie.
Hi.
Motion carries.
All right, our final item for consideration from the planning commission is approval of the preliminary and final plat of Holly Heights, the fifty-eighth and Null project. Will that be you, Carrie?
All right, great, thank you. All right, so this is case twenty-two sixteen, Holly Heights preliminary and final plat. Um, the PDP with this one was already approved, um, through the preliminary and final development plan. Um, basically what is happening with this plat is the sidewalk area and on-street parking along Maple, um, is being dedicated to the city. Um, the, blah, 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 blah. Yeah, to the city of Mission, uh, proposed parallel parking as well. And the applicant has agreed to maintain the parallel parking on now, at Null Avenue in perpetuity. This agreement shall follow the property, um, upon transfer to any other subsequent owners should the property ownership change. And there's been a maintenance agreement signed with this as well, that we have on file. Uh, the easements proposed in the plat are areas dedicated for access to electrical utilities. The electrical easement is ten feet wide on center. Um, in the northern portion of the lot for approximately a hundred and twenty feet. And the electrical utility runs south along the property line for the length of the property with a five-foot easement on this, on the subject property. Uh, again, generally under section four fifty-five one hundred of the Mission Municipal Code, typical subdivision, at the time of an original plat shall exercise good design and layout. Staff finds that this is the case.
All right, thank you. Is there any member of the public who would like to comment on this issue? Seeing none, we'll open the floor for council discussion. Any comments or questions from council on this piece? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion on the preliminary and final plat of Holly Heights.
Mayor, I move the city council approve the pr- preliminary and final plats of Holly Heights, PC case twenty-two sixteen.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Robin, please call the roll.
Loudon. Thomas.
Yes.
Krang.
Nay.
Josie.
Hi.
Davis.
Hi.
Inman. Ryard.
Hi.
Boltinghouse.
Hi.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. We'll now move into our committee reports. Councilmember Boltinghouse, will you please provide a report from the Finance and Administration Committee?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The Finance and Administration Committee met on September seventh and considered four items. The meeting minutes, the adoption of the STO traffic ordinance and the Uniform Public Offense Code books for twenty-twenty-two were already approved this evening under the consent agenda. An ordinance regarding massage establishment licensing and the election of voting delegates for the National League of Cities Conference and the League of Kansas municipalities will be considered under the regular agenda. Item seven A revolves around massage establishment licensing. The city recently received an inquiry from two Mission residents regarding massage establishment and massage therapist licensing as a home occupation. The council discussed this issue at the August committee meeting. Uh, Kansas is only one of four states that do not regulate, certify or license massage therapists at the state level. The requirements are set by each city and the city council indicated that it would re- uh, be reasonable to reevaluate our current code. Several modifications to the current code were recommended. The city attorney has completed a legal review of the recommended changes since the F and A committee meeting on the seventh. The recommended changes do not change the intent of the code modifications, and they suggested, they are suggested to ensure additional clarity. The most significant of those changes are noted in the redline code chapter included in the meeting packet. Currently, Mission's municipal code regulating massage therapy only allows for massage therapy to be performed on commercial businesses. This is section six twenty dot two forty-two B. However, it is staff's opinion that massage therapy is a suitable practice for home occupations when considering the impacts to the neighborhood in terms of noise, traffic, et cetera. Though staff received only a limited number of responses from other cities who do allow massage as home occupations, the feedback that was shared was that numbers of permit are modest. Four current permits exist in Overland Park, for example. The recommendations would allow massage therapy at a licensed massage establishment, either in commercial business setting or is permitted under a home occupation permit or an in-office or private residence setting at the direction of and under the current supervision of a licensed healing and arts practitioner with the current massage establishment license. Mayor, I move the city council approve the ordinance amending Mission Municipal Code, Chapter six twenty, modifying Mission's licensing requirements for massage establishments and massage therapists.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Ryard.
Hi.
Krang.
Hi.
Josie.
Hi.
Davis.
Hi.
Thomas.
Yes.
Loudon. Boltinghouse.
Hi.
Inman. Motion carries.
Item seven B is the election of voting delegates to the League of Kansas municipalities and National League of Cities. Each year, elected officials and city staff attend both the National League of Cities Annual Conference and the League of Kansas municipalities annual business meeting. For both events, voting delegates are selected from those attending on behalf of the city. We will select voting delegates for the LKM Annual Business Conference in Overland Park and voting delegates for the National League of Cities Business Meeting at the NLC City Summit, uh, from November seventh to nineteenth in Casey Mo. The LKM meeting is October tenth at noon. The city proposes to select Mayor Flora, Councilmember Loudon and Councilmember Thomas as delegates to the League's annual business meeting on October tenth, twenty-twenty-two. The city proposes to name Councilmember Krang as our voting delegate with Councilmember Loudon as the ultimate. The city proposes to name Councilmember Krang as our voting delegate with Councilmember Loudon as the alternate delegate to a business meeting held during the NLC City Summit, November seventeenth through nineteenth in Kansas City. Mayor, I move the city council approve the election of the listed voting delegates and alternates for both the LKM Annual Business Meeting and the NLC Conference.
Second.
Right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Boltinghouse.
Hi.
Josie.
Hi.
Davis.
Hi.
Thomas.
Yes.
Loudon. Inman.
Ryer. Hi.
Krang.
Hi.
Motion carries.
That concludes my report, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Or sorry, Councilmember Josie, will you please provide a report from the Community Development Committee?
Yes, thank you for the promotion.
Yep. No problem.
The Community Development Committee also met on September seventh and considered six items. The meeting minutes, the pavement marking project, the Rock Creek Preliminary Project Study, uh, fifty-first street from Lamar Avenue to Reed's Road Sidewalk Repair Project, and Public Works snow equipment purchase were approved under the consent agenda. An amended joint use agreement with the Kansas Department of Transportation for Streamway Park and the Broadmoor Park Trail Task Order will be considered under the regular agenda. So item seven C, uh, revolves around the amendment of the joint use agreement for Streamway Park. On March twenty-fifth nineteen eighty-seven, Mission entered into an agreement number sixty-nine dash eighty-six with the Kansas Department of Transportation for right-of-way use of Streamway Park if use, quote, "did not impair the use and safety of the existing public roadways." That agreement has remained in good standing for the past thirty-five years. Communication between the city and KDOT has occurred regularly over the past three years as easements and general park use have increased. Early in twenty-twenty-two, staff shared the revised Streamway Park conceptual design with KDOT's Metro Engineer after consistent feedback from residents, city council, and Parks Recreation and Tree Commission members supported Streamway Park as the preferred location for a dog park. The KDOT Metro Engineer supported and then secured approval from the Federal Highway Administration to include the conceptual park redesign and dog park amenities with the caveat that the proposed area is within the same area as approved in Agreement number sixty-nine dash eighty-six. The project improvements contemplated for Streamway Park show two structures, park shelter and restrooms. Paragraph eleven of Agreement number sixteen eighty-six does not allow permanent structures to be built on said right-of-way. There needs to be an agreement addressing that if any structures are built that they comply with all potential road safety concerns clearly outside the roadway clear zones in this case. And that when this agreement is terminated, the licensee is solely responsible for the removal from the right-of-way. So Mayor, I move the city council approve a supplemental joint use agreement between the City of Mission, Kansas and the Kansas Department of Transportation for right-of-way use of Streamway Park.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Krang.
Hi.
Loudon. Boltinghouse.
Hi.
Davis.
Hi.
Josie.
Hi.
Ryer.
Hi.
Inman. Thomas.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And item seventy is the Broadmoor Park Trail Task Order. During multiple Mission Parks conceptual redesign neighborhood meetings in twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two, residents repeatedly shared that the trail needed to be leveled and resurfaced due to large cracks and breaking and eroding edges. Staff's observations of the trail validate the resident feedback. The Mission Parks and Recreation Master Plan, which included a twenty-fifteen analysis of, of the park, recommended that trail conditions be improved. In April twenty-twenty-two, staff and the Parks Recreation and Tree Commission members discussed park needs, and the PRT subsequently created a recommended priority list for council consideration. The number one priority of the four recommendations was trail maintenance and improvements. The entire trail extends one thousand six hundred and ten feet or about three tenths of a mile. This trail, a six-foot asphalt trail, is one of the longer loops in Mission's park trail system. The trail amenity ranks second in use behind only the playground features within Broadmoor Park. Understanding the popularity of this amenity in conjunction with the limitations of the deteriorating asphalt, staff supports the PRT recommendation to plan for an improved slope and wider trail so visitors and residents of all abilities can safely use the Broadmoor Park Trail. Therefore, Mayor, I move the city council approve a task order with George Butler Associates for preparation of a trail improvement plan at Broadmoor Park in an amount not to exceed thirty-two thousand dollars.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Josie.
Hi.
Krang.
Hi.
Thomas.
Yes.
Davis.
Hi.
Inman. Loudon. Ryer.
Hi.
Boltinghouse.
Hi.
Motion carries.
And that concludes my report.
All right, we do not have any unfinished business on our agenda this evening, and we do not have any new business on our agenda this evening. Therefore, um, there being no further business items for consideration, we'll move into comments from our city council. This is an opportunity for comments from our council members. Does anyone on the council have something they'd like to share? Yes, Ben, then Ken, then Debbie?
Uh, yeah, I, I didn't think it was appropriate to bring this back up during the fifty-six sixty-five, um, Foxers discussion, but I did want to just reemphasize my interest in making sure that we're, um, you know, moving forward with considering how we keep that Metcalf Avenue corridor safe, especially with the increased usage. I really love to see, uh, traffic slowing down and ideally signalized as we add population to that area. I know that's not entirely in our, in our purview, but, um, I think it should remain, um, a high priority that as we add population to that area, we continue to look out for the safety of motorists, residents, pedestrians, anybody in that area. And hopefully we can find a way to, to work through some of the difficulties there.
Yep. Uh, Ken and Debbie?
I just wanted to shout out to Public Works for the work that they did in paving the streets, uh, and finishing up sixty-second Terrace Outlook and Read. So thank you very much.
Yes, Debbie?
Just wanted to comment, if any of you didn't get out this weekend, you needed to go and come, uh, come to the community center to look at our phenomenal environmental fair hosted by the Sustainability Commission. It was great work by the commission staff, uh, the community center overall, and it was a phenomenal, uh, shout out to all the vendors that came and the children and the families and everybody. It was a wonderful, wonderful opportunity for us to kind of showcase all the environmental activities going on in Mission. And I, I don't know if anybody else has any comments, but if you got to come, Hillary's kids were there manning a, manning a booth, and I took several pictures and Emily now has them to download and it, it was just a wonderful opportunity. I, that's specific thanks to Terry Bowe, who just does wonderful work. Uh, she's our recycling queen of the city and just did a wonderful job in getting this all together. So just a great thanks.
For sure. Emily, did we have a total headcount on that? The, the reporting said hundreds, but I don't think we kept an official tally. All right. Any more council comments? Yeah, Hillary?
I just wanted to congratulate staff on a wonderful voter turnout and exciting election results. I'm sure you'll highlight that in your staff report, Laura, but congratulations and thank you to everyone and your hard work.
All right. Next, we'll move into our council committee liaison reports. These reports allow the entire governing body to stay up to date with the various activities of the boards, commissions, and committees. First, we all have councilmembers Krang and Thomas for the Sustainability Commission.
Just another shout out for the environmental fair that they put together over the last several months. It's, you know, these are all volunteer people on these commissions, and it's wonderful to see how the results show and showcase exactly what our commissions stand for, and the volunteerism is just number one, as far as I'm concerned. So that would be my take on it.
Uh, we got it, got it covered. All right. Well, then we'll move on to, let's see, uh, council, councilmember Ryer for the Parks Recreation and Tree Commission tonight.
Yeah, and I'm going to say it again. How about that Parks and Rec Sales Tax Renewal because I'm so excited. But anyways, um, yeah, so we certainly went through a lot. So, um, I think one of the bigger takeaways for me is that the summer camp this year had a cost recovery of a hundred and seventy-eight percent, um, which was awesome. Um, and then again, I'm, I feel like I'm just going to be tooting Penn's horn. But, um, he submitted a land and water conservation fund grant that was a total of five hundred pages right and back um, to secure some funding for Streamway, um, which we're all pretty excited about. We should hear back between thirty to sixty days. Let's keep our fingers and toes crossed um, on that. Um, let's see, um, Mohawk Park stakes have been put in. Um, I know Penn was reaching out to see when we were going to be mobilizing officially on that, hopefully next week, um, sometime. And, um, kind of a quick shout out, the spooky walk is going to be October twenty-eighth at Streamway, and they are looking for volunteers. So if you want to spook some kids or pass out some candy, um, things like that, definitely reach out to, uh, Jenny Smith. Um, she'll be happy to have you, um, help volunteer. So, yep.
And volunteering is super fun, but if anyone does it, I would recommend that you wear your comfy shoes, not your costume shoes. It is several hours of standing still. So keep that in mind if you volunteer. All right. Uh, next we'll hear an update from Councilmember Boltinghouse on the Mission Magazine Editorial Board.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick one. I was unable to make the previous meeting of this group, but we do have our upcoming issue hitting mailboxes either by the, this weekend or early next week. Thank you, Laura, for your confirmation on that timeline. And it should be a good one. There's going to be a recap about our recent Mohawk Park, uh, ribbon cutting and sort of the general, uh, festive atmosphere around that event. So looking forward to seeing that one and reading through it.
Great, thank you. And finally, Councilmember Josie with the Family Adoption Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. The Family Adoption Committee met on August eighteenth and, um, primarily discussion revolved around, uh, communication, soliciting donations, and getting the word out about this year's, uh, programs, as well as some, uh, continued early logistics preparation, finding boxes and storage space and, and meeting the requirements of some of the partners that provide food and, and how they ask us to store food. Um, so we, we're, we've got letters going out to local schools and social workers, um, flyers, uh, for the community and letters to pass donors going out. And, um, we are still looking into harvesters having trouble stocking shelves, but they anticipate the situation is improving in the fall. Um, so we, we think that that will be, uh, better than it is now anyway. Um, fundraising is on course and, uh, a lot of the other smaller issues, wrapping and pet gifts and, um, uh, just the, the usual storage issues like, like renting the pod. Um, all of that stuff is on course and well organized.
All right. Thank you. Uh, next is my report. I do not have any appointments this evening, but I do have a couple of comments. Uh, first, thanks to you, to those of you who could make it to the Mission Bowl groundbreaking today. I'm really excited to see uh, that successful public-private partnership and see the advancement of some of our sustainability and attainable housing goals in particular. So looking forward to see the, seeing the building go up there. Um, next, I just wanted to also share that I got invited, um, to go to a class over lunch today. So I went over the noon hour to UMKC to their honors program has a new leadership class. And so they had, uh, Mayor Quentin Lucas, Mayor Michelson, and myself come in and it was a good, you know, change up from sort of the super formal speaking engagements. We just got to sit around in a circle in desks, which had been a while, a little, you know, attached, attached desk chair situation, um, and take really great questions from, uh, twelve of their honors program students. And so it was really fun. Um, lots of good questions about public engagement and, you know, balancing life as an elected official. And um, we even got told that if we all created TikTok videos, that we would at least have at least one follower from that group. So you never know, but. We already had a comment. Oh, yeah, Debbie?
I'm sorry. I should have addressed this earlier. And our wonderful city clerk, Robin, can probably give you more information about this, but this is a heads up that October seventh, which is a Friday evening from five-thirty to seven-thirty, Rushden will have its farewell alumni and the public at large are invited to celebrate with Rushden on its historical success and getting way for a new building at some point.
Yes. All right. Next, we will move into our city administrators' report. Laura, do you have any additional items to share with council this evening?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Just a couple, um, our August interim financial reports. I don't have a lot to report on this. Next month, we will transition and we'll be looking and comparing revenues and expenses to our revised twenty-twenty-two budget. So the reports will look slightly different starting next month. Um, some good budget news on a couple of fronts this week. As several have mentioned, we did renew our, uh, Parks and Recreation Sales Tax, which means I have already called Mr. Kimmel and said, let's start talking about, uh, debt financing scenarios for park improvements and street improvements. So we're looking forward to bringing that back to the council in the next couple of months. I, I think, um, you know, particular, um, thanks to Emily Randall and our team at Crocs. Uh, you know, we developed the roadmap that we followed for this election with the street sales tax election last year. And we saw even greater success. I don't think any of us anticipated an eighty-six percent approval rating, but we will take it by all means. Um, you may recall, we had a seventy-seven point one five percent on the street. Voter turnout was slightly higher. Um, this election was about twenty-five point six percent versus twenty-three point nine seven. Um, something that I think is a little more interesting is we actually increased the number of registered voters between our election last September and this September by three percent. Um, so I think that, that serves us all well, uh, into the future. So thanks to everyone for that hard work. Uh, and we'll look forward to investing those resources in our Parks and Recreation System. Um, and I'm, we also received, uh, which was way ahead of schedule, um, news from Blue Cross Blue Shield that we will have a flat renewal with health insurance this year. Um, which we were all holding our breath, which, um, we budgeted for a, a, a five percent increase. So that gives us money back immediately in our twenty-twenty-three budget. So that should keep us right at our twenty-five percent fund balance. You know, I know council is gracious enough to let us dip into that slightly. So barring anything crazy between now and the first of the year, I think we should be good there. And just a reminder that we will have our special meeting next Wednesday, six-thirty here at the community center.
All right. Thanks, Laura. We do not have a need for an executive session this evening. Um, so before we adjourn tonight, I just want to share with the public that the video from this meeting will be available through a link on our website at missionks.org. There being no further business tonight, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.